Good evening, everyone. I'll call to order the Arvada City Council meeting for August the 6th, 2018. And call upon Councilmember Bob Pfeifer.
Thank you. Would everyone please join me in a moment of silent reflection? And then now the pledge of allegiance. And we'll have our voice count in the audience lead us off.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the red flag for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now Scout, if you'll tell us your name and what troop you're in and what badge you're working on.
My name is Mika Johnson, and I am from Troop 21. And I am working on STAR.
Very good. Thanks for being here. Where do you go to school?
I am homeschooled.
Good for you. Okay, thanks for being here tonight. With that, Kristen Rush, if you'll do the roll call.
Mayor Williams.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Marriott.
Here.
Councilmember Pfeifer.
Here.
Councilmember Ford.
Here.
Councilmember Jones.
Here.
Councilmember McGough.
Here.
Councilmember Miller.
Here.
Great. All council is present and accounted for. Next, we have the approval of the minutes of July 16th. Any changes or corrections? I see no lights, so they will stand approved as presented. I'm going to rearrange the schedule here slightly. We're going to do the swearing-in ceremony before public comment, if that's agreeable with the rest of the council. So we'll have our presiding municipal court judge, David Cook, do the swearing-in portion of this.
Chief, how are you? Welcome.
Thank you.
Stand right there. Can everybody see you, chief? All right, chief, please.
Anybody want to get in better position for pictures? Feel free to come down.
You know, this is, we good? You've got about five people watching you here.
I'm good. My wife says we're good.
She says we're good. Repeat after me. I, Link Straight.
I, Link Straight.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
And of the state of Colorado.
And of the state of Colorado.
In the charter and ordinances.
And the charter and ordinances.
Of the city of Arvada.
Of the city of Arvada.
And faithfully perform the duties.
And faithfully perform the duties.
Of the office of police chief.
Of the office of police chief.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations, chief.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Absolutely. I'm a chief now. As I step into the position, there's a couple of things that I think of. First is my family. The job of police officer is a difficult job at best. Without the support of your family, it's almost impossible. The other thing that comes to mind is community. And I think about the support of this community, the city of Arvada, and what they have done for this police department in my time here and beyond that. And if you're going to create a blueprint for what a police and community relationship should look like, you could come to Arvada and see what they do. The next thing is partnership. I think about the partnerships of law enforcement in the Jefferson County area and how much we have benefited from that and how much we appreciate our partners in law enforcement. And then the men and women of the Arvada Police Department. I think about our civilian staff who works in records, keeping track of all the things that we do. Our dispatchers now working down at Jeffcom who take those calls and dispatch them to our police officers. All of our officers who work in patrol, traffic, investigations, and all the departments in the police department. And to know that for the last 31 years that I have been in this organization, every moment of every day of that time, there have been Arvada police officers out there 24/7 protecting this community. And to them, and all of you, I would like to say, thank you. Thank you.
And speaking on behalf of the city council, and if others want to chime in, they certainly can, I know that we did a very exhaustive, we being the city manager's office, did a very exhaustive national search, and we had the two best candidates for this position within our own force. And I want, and I know the rest of the council joins me in thanking Ed Brady for his time as the interim chief and his continued service as deputy chief. Mark Devon had a tough, tough choice, except he knew he could not go wrong with either of these two great, great gentlemen. And Link follows in the footprints of a number of great chiefs of police that we've had here in Arvada, going back, as far as I go back, to Jerry Williams and then Pat Alstrom, and Ron Sloan, and Don Wick. And we've had some excellent, excellent chiefs. So Chief Straight, you've got some shoes to fill, but we're confident you can do so. And I think that we've got a tradition in this community of excellence in police service. You look at the accreditations that our police department receives, and you look at the quality of our officers, from the newest to the seasoned vets. We've got an excellent, excellent core of our police department. And I, for one, can sleep at night knowing that we've got the very best out there who are defending us day and night. So, thank you. Okay, with that, I can ask Mr. McGough if he'd like to make a comment.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to congratulate Chief Straight once again, as I have done in the past, but I also would like to just acknowledge that Chief Sloan, former Chief Sloan, is here this evening. And I think it's appropriate to acknowledge his presence and to thank him for being here in the swearing-in of one of his successors. Thank you, Ron.
Very good. Okay, well, that's a nice little ceremony to have, and we're glad that we could be part of it here tonight. Next, we've got public comment, and we'll get the podium back out here. Thanks, Tomas. I have Carol Daniels signed up to speak. Yes, Ms. Daniels.
Hi. My name is Carol Daniels. I live at Weeping Willows Town Homes, which is basically 54th and Balsam. I've lived there 26 years. I own it, my townhome. I want you to consider that what has happened in Golden, Boulder, Fort Collins, Colorado Springs, and Wheat Ridge is considering, they already passed the ban. What I want you to consider is the ban on short-term rental and short-term leasing. I am one of four people who live in our townhomes that own their townhomes. Everybody else owns their townhome but rents it. Out of 16 units, only four of us live there. It is getting to the point where we have all rental people. Some of them are good, some are a little not so good. But one of my neighbors is now starting to lease their townhome on a weekly basis. So we're going to have a lot of people coming and going that we don't know, and we won't be able to get to know because they'll be in and out. The last one that just was in, which I just found out was a weekly rental, was a nice gentleman from Missouri. But this family has put in some doozies, let's put it that way, through the years. And so I know that Golden just put a ban in, Fort Collins does, Boulder has the ban. I know Colorado Springs is thinking about it. I wish Denver would, too. What they're putting is that it's all right if you live in your facility or your home and you rent a bedroom out, like in the college towns. But you have to live there. You're not renting the property and bringing in people like you would in a hotel or motel, renting it out. And that's what I would like to put a stop to. We do have covenants, but they don't address that. Our townhomes are 40 years old, and they didn't even think about that things back then. And it would take 11 people to agree for it in our facilities. And so I doubt if we can get 11 people to agree on that, because a lot of people buy their townhome now just to rent them. They don't ever live there. So they're making them as an investment to make money. And for people who live there, it can be a little rough. And so, please, that's all I'm asking. Thank you.
Okay, we'll direct our city staff to look at your request. I guess my thought would be, you might want to talk to some of the other owners who are not living there, because they don't want to see their property values go down.
Yeah, I talked to a couple of them, and their eyes got really bright. Oh, that can, you can do that?
Oh.
Yeah. So I thought, oh, this isn't going to work. So I thought, maybe I can do this first and then see where it goes.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for coming before us tonight. Anybody else wish to address city council during the open public comment portion? Seeing none, I'll close that, and we'll move on to new business. We've got a few items on the consent agenda. The first is 2018-362, which is a resolution approving a sixth amendment to an employment agreement by and between the city of Arvada and Mark G. Devon as city manager. Second one is a resolution approving a fifth amendment to an employment agreement with David Cook, presiding municipal judge. And the next one is a resolution approving a 25th amendment to an employment agreement with Christopher K. Daly, we can tell, city attorney, we can tell who's been here the longest. Next is a resolution authorizing a license agreement by and between the city of Arvada and PNS 5711 LLC, a Colorado corporation, for the grant of a revocable encroachment license to install an outdoor patio area and folding windows in the Wadsworth Boulevard right-of-way at 5711 Wadsworth. Next one is a resolution accepting a general warranty deed from Stephen B. White and Lynn M. White pertaining to the White Annexation Number Two located at 75th Avenue and Sims. Sixth item is a resolution accepting a general warranty deed from Stephen B. White and Lynn M. White pertaining to that same annexation generally at 75th Avenue and Sim Street. Final item on the consent agenda is a resolution authorizing a purchase order in the amount of approximately $208,000 to Interspec LLC for the purchase of ICC Pro Software, 25 field units, one field interface unit, and existing database conversion. Do I have a motion? Mr. Pfeifer.
I have a question first.
Okay.
It says 57 on, sorry, let me go back to what we were just looking at, on consent item 2018-366, which is 5711. Is that Old Wadsworth Boulevard?
Let me see if I can address this for the council.
I just want to make sure we have the right address.
This question came up a little bit earlier today, and one of my attorneys, Reed Betzey, looked into it. And here's the explanation. The city does not assign the address of Old Wadsworth to any of the parcels along Old Wadsworth. They are assigned Wadsworth Boulevard. Those addresses from 53rd to 65th on Wadsworth are given for the highway, the bypass addresses. From my understanding, the post office has figured it out, and if anybody puts 5711, either Old Wadsworth or Wadsworth, they deliver it. But for purposes of the actual agreements themselves, 5711 Wadsworth Boulevard is properly set forth in the license agreement. There's an Exhibit B that we're going to be making corrections because it technically refers to Old Wadsworth in order to make it consistent. But the answer is 5711 Wadsworth Boulevard is the correct.
Thank you.
Address.
Thank you. I can make the motion to approve.
Okay, go ahead.
I move to approve consent agenda items 2018-362, 363, 364, 366, 374, 375, 390 for approval.
Motion's for approval. All votes cast. That passes seven to zero. Thank you. Next, we have some resolutions. The first is 2018-389 of R. 18078, a resolution authorizing intergovernmental agreements by and between the city of Arvada and the counties of Adams and Jefferson for the special municipal election on November 6th, 2018. Mr. Devon.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. While you haven't officially approved the resolution to place an item on the ballot for the November special election, we actually have to enact these agreements at this particular point in time. So on the basis of where the decision is trending, these intergovernmental agreements are before you tonight to work with the counties of Adams and Jefferson for the special municipal election to be held on November 6th, 2018. This is the standard agreement that we do every time we conduct either a special election or as part of a regular election. The cost for contracting with both counties is $50,000. And of course, by working with both counties, we are able to avoid any duplication of services for the election. Staff recommends approval of the resolution.
Okay, open for council questions or action. David Jones.
I'd like to make a motion.
You may proceed.
I move that R. 18-078, a resolution authorizing an intergovernmental agreement, intergovernmental agreements by and between the city of Arvada and the counties of Adams and Jefferson for the special municipal election on November 6th, 2018, be approved.
Motion's for approval. All votes are cast. That passes seven to zero. Thank you. Next, we have a resolution, R. 18079, a resolution authorizing an amendment entitled Amendment to the Second Amended and Restated Intergovernmental Agreement Establishing the Juvenile Assessment Center and Termination of Agreement with Mental Health between the county of Jefferson, state of Colorado, Jefferson County Sheriff's Office, Jefferson County School District Number R. 1, the cities of Arvada, Edgewater, Golden, Lakewood, Wheat Ridge, and Westminster, and Jefferson Center for Mental Health. Mr. Devon.
Actually, I'm going to handle this. Mayor and members of council, let me give you a little background on this. In 2001, the city of Arvada and the other agencies mentioned executed an intergovernmental agreement creating the Juvenile Assessment Center. A subset of the agencies executed then a companion agreement at the time entitled the Mental Health Agreement, under which the Jefferson Center for Mental Health provided certain services to the Juvenile Assessment Center. In 2017, the agencies executed a second amended and restated Juvenile Assessment Center, IGA, and under the terms of the Mental Health Agreement, because of that IGA in 2017, they're no longer applicable. And so the purpose of this ordinance is to memorialize the termination of the now obsolete Mental Health Agreement and clarifies that the Jefferson Center for Mental Health is not a party to the formation of the Juvenile Assessment Center under the IGA. And it also clarifies that the Jefferson Center of Mental Health is an independent contractor of the Juvenile Assessment Center, which is solely responsible for the insurance for the employees, tax withholding, and benefits.
Okay, I'll open it up for council question or action. Mr. Marriott.
Thank you, Your Honor. I move that R. 18-079, a resolution authorizing an amendment entitled Amendment to the Second Amendment of Restated Intergovernmental Agreement Establishing the Juvenile Assessment Center and Termination of Agreement with Mental Health between the county of Jefferson, state of Colorado, the Jefferson County Sheriff's Office, Jefferson County School District Number R. 1, the cities of Arvada, Edgewater, Golden, Lakewood, Wheat Ridge, and Westminster, and Jefferson Center for the Mental Health be approved.
Motion's for approval. All votes are cast. That passes seven to zero. Very good. Thank you. Next, we have Resolution 18080, a resolution endorsing Initiative 153, a statewide transportation ballot proposal. Mr. Devon.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. You may recall back on June the 11th, the council held a workshop where you received a presentation from the sponsors of the Let's Go Colorado campaign in support of a potential statewide ballot measure to increase the state sales tax by .62 in order to address Colorado's growing transportation infrastructure needs. This presentation really summarized the ballot measure, which is also known as Initiative 153. I wanted to mention a few things about this initiative. Should it qualify for the ballot, the number 2018 ballot, and be approved by the voters, state taxes would be increased by .62, about six cents on a ten dollar purchase. This would be the state sales tax for 20 years in order to generate an estimated $776 million for Colorado's transportation infrastructure. Based on the formulas that allow for allocation to local governments, Arvada would receive about $4.5 million in the first year and about $6.5 million annually for years 2 through 20. As I believe the council knows, and I know those of you that serve on regional boards that deal with transportation know, that transportation funding has been one of those standing discussions that seems to occur year in and year out, both regionally and statewide. This measure was one of several measures that was considered by the legislature and the governor in terms of some ways of generating some additional funding for the streets and roads infrastructure throughout the state. And as council is well aware, we also had a measure on the ballot that would have increased our sales tax by .5 back in 2016. That measure failed, and since that time, we've sought ways to generate an approximate $16 million of funding for infrastructure funds for our local streets and roads. We've been successful in that we've tripled our investment over the last seven years to $11 million annually. However, we're still some $5 million plus short of meeting all of our infrastructure needs. I've heard people in the community say, well, you tried to authorize a sales tax increase in order to fund your streets and roads, and you're still doing it. Well, of course we are, because we have to keep up with it as best we can. But we still have a $5 million a year deficit, and I want to make sure everyone understands that. We are not fully funded in terms of meeting the needs for our local streets and roads. This measure could help in that regard. It could also be used to fund transportation capacity improvements, as we've been discussing over the last few months. So these are examples of how this particular initiative could assist with us. The information contained in the staff report and the resolution that was prepared by the city attorney's office provides more detail, and staff recommends that the city council approve Resolution R. 18080 and endorse Initiative 153.
And as a supplement to what the city managers indicated, the State Fair Campaign Practices Act specifically permits the city council to adopt a resolution in support of a ballot proposal.
Very good. Before we proceed further, I understand Mr. Marriott wishes to speak, which we will certainly allow. Mr. Marriott.
Yeah, so this proposed ballot amendment is, would, a big chunk of it will go to CDOT if it were to be passed by the voters, to do what's, CDOT's Tier One level of projects. One of those affects me personally. That would be the I-70 and Kipling interchange. I own a commercial building and a business right there. And if that Tier One project were to be funded, my business will be taken by eminent domain, or my property would be taken by eminent domain. As such, I don't have the ability to be objective on this resolution, so I will be abstaining from voting on this.
And I think that requires a motion from, so do I have a member of council make a motion to allow Mr. Jones to recuse?
Mr. Marriott.
Mr. Marriott to recuse? I saw Mr. Jones light up, so that's what made me jump in. Mr. Jones.
Yes, I move to allow Mr. Marriott to recuse himself from this matter.
Okay, so if you'll vote on the request, and Mr. Marriott does not vote on that, is correct? Correct. Okay, all votes are cast. Yeah, the reality of this is, is that the project that Mr. Marriott speaks to is one of the top priorities for this funding, the Kipling-I-70 interchange. And when he came to us and indicated that he obviously would have a problem with being objective about this, we, I think, discussed that and recognized it, and therefore vote six to zero. Mr. Marriott will not participate in further discussion on this issue. Okay, with that, council questions or action? Mr. Pfeifer.
I'll make the motion, and I'd like to make a comment.
You bet.
I approve. I move that Resolution 18-080, Resolution endorsing Initiative Number 153, a statewide transportation ballot proposal be approved. And the comment I just want to make is, from the Denver Regional Council of Governments, this is critical for local municipalities and counties to address a lot of the road issues. I hear that we've talked about capacity, but we should also look at operational issues as well, because we can't keep widening roads. But if this gets done, it closes our gap, and we can address it. So from the Denver Regional Council of Governments, this is kind of a mission-critical ballot for the whole front range to, in the state, to benefit. We get a lot of tourism in the state, and that can help fund some of these roads. So of course, I'll be supporting the motion.
Yeah, and it's no secret that I've been right in the middle of this thing from the get-go, both, you know, here locally, through CML, during my time as president of CML, when there were some conversations about statewide funding. And I literally traveled around the state talking to folks from the four corners about the need to be able to address transportation needs statewide. And then in my role as the chair of the Transportation Committee for the Metro Mayor's Caucus, we've been dealing with this issue quite intently. And the mentality, and we've worked with groups as diverse as Club 20, folks from, again, from throughout the state, ski country communities, the business community, the Denver Chamber of Commerce, other chambers of commerce, other business groups, who have all come together as a coalition in support of this Let's Go Colorado initiative. Now certainly, we don't like raising taxes. But that's the beauty of the taxpayer bill of rights, is that we can go to the citizens and ask if they are willing to raise taxes on themselves. This is not government imposing taxes on citizens. It's saying to our citizenry, should we increase our sales tax so that we can fund infrastructure roadway needs locally, regionally, and statewide? And we looked at income tax as an opportunity. That doesn't get us where we want to be. We looked at increasing the gas tax, and you would have to dramatically increase the gas tax to be able to raise the kind of money that can be raised through a sales tax. One of the beauties of the sales tax initiative is that it gives us the opportunity to tax those who visit our state, the tourists who come in, who use our roads, who use our services, that they should pay their fair share of these infrastructure needs. So for that reason, I will be supporting this resolution and would urge those on city council to do so as well. Mr. Jones.
Just a quick question and a comment, Mr. Devon, on the proposed $6 million or so per year that we would get for the next, so rough math, little more than $100 million over the next 20 years. Will that be, will that go to the general fund, or will that be dedicated for transportation like projects?
So I would look to the city councils for specific direction on that. Our recommendation would be that we would put it into the special transportation fund that we've created, that we created shortly, well, actually in early 2017, and that we would put it in that particular fund. And then, as you know, Councilmember Jones and council, we actually have that fund set aside strictly for transportation and infrastructure needs. And that's where I would propose that we put it.
Okay. And then just a comment, as I serve on the Jefferson County Economic Development Board, and this came before us as well, and from an economic driver, this is something that that board of directors also, and membership is in full support of, and so I will also be supporting this measure tonight.
Very good. We have the motion. Members would vote, with the exception of Mr. Marriott. All votes cast. That passes six to zero. Mr. Marriott abstaining for a, due to, I don't want to call it a conflict of interest. What do we call it, mister?
I think it's, he stated, it's not so much a conflict of interest, but I think it's just an issue of bias.
Okay. Right. Very good. Okay, Mr. Marriott, you are now unlocked. You can vote on future issues coming before us tonight. We have ordinances on first reading.
Thank you, Your Honor. I move that Council Bill 18-034, an ordinance authorizing a First Amendment to an intergovernmental agreement between the city of Arvada and the city of Thornton for the purchase and sale of water storage and water rights and for the delivery of water, and Council Bill 18-035, an ordinance repealing and reenacting Article III, Special Events Permits of Chapter Six, Alcohol Beverages of the City of Arvada City Code, both be approved on first reading, ordered published in full, and a public hearing set for August 20th, 2018, at 6:30 PM.
Motion's for approval of the Questions for approval of the first readings? All votes cast. That passes seven to zero. Thank you. Next, we have a second quarter financial presentation. Mr. Devon, you gonna have?
Yes.
That Bill Archer guy?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Brian Archer, Director of Finance, assisted by members of the finance staff will present this presentation.
Mr. Archer?
Mayor and council, thank you for taking the time to allow us to come present our mid-quarter financial report. Hopefully, you all received one of these last week. You've read it thoroughly, and so we'll field questions after we're done with our presentation. We would like to do a quick overview. So, revenues are trending positive, but we're definitely slowing down, not slowing down into the negative by any stretch of the imagination, just slowing down our growth. Staff is doing a wonderful job keeping expenditures in line, and we are all still anticipating the G-line opening. From the comments, we know that the trains are running, so hopefully, fair service will start here in the next month or so. Don't quote me on that. So, part of what we've been working on over the past few years is to intertwine performance and numbers. And so, I would like to pull out just a few graphs that are included in this presentation and talk a little bit more about them. So, the first graph that you see is going to relate to a City Council strategic result around fund balance and our fund balance goal. Council might remember that we have set the goal of 17% of budgeted expenditures that we need to maintain as an operating reserve. That is that green line that you see. So, over the past three years, we've been able to stay quite far above that green line. As you can see, that has gone up and down depending on the quarter, usually ending somewhere around 25 to 30%. As we sit today, we sit at 43%, 44%. That number will come down, as expenditures throughout the rest of the year, specifically capital project expenditures, will increase. The next performance measure I would like to talk about relates to public trust. So, what you will see is a chart that goes back to 1997, as part of a question that we ask our citizens, in this case, what was every other year. We are now looking to possibly ask this question more often. And you can see there, for a period of time, citizens felt like they received good value for their tax dollar, moving towards our goal of around 66%. Is that correct, Maria? 66%, I think. We've fallen back a little bit recently, and so we're working quite hard to try to understand that, and looking at ways that we could then change that in upcoming budget practices. The next two performance measure graphs, one is related to response time. So, you can see up in the top-left quadrant, and I was hoping that our police department would stay for our presentation, but I'm sure they will watch it later. This goes all about emergency call times, and that 90% can be less than five minutes. And you will notice that the one sector that is falling behind that is the Delta Sector, the reason, and one of the many justifications given for putting in the new police station out there. This should help change these numbers, and will be something that we will be monitoring and bringing back to City Council in future years. And then, what you will see on the bottom-right relates to drinking water, an item that comes up a lot. We compare ourselves to other cities, and in this case, you will see Fort Collins, Westminster, and the overall Front Range average. And Arvada performs at or above each one of these cities on a regular basis, save Fort Collins. And so, our goal is to continue to be in the leader and grow in this area.
Okay, so, this slide shows the general fund indicators, and as you can see, all of the indicators are positive, except we do have a yellow one on auto-use tax, which I'll talk about more in the next slide. So, when you look at auto-use tax, throughout 2017, we saw that nationally, auto sales were down. However, Arvada seemed to be somewhat insulated from this trend. We think that much of it may be to the May hailstorms, and that people were buying new vehicles, so we still saw an increase in auto-use tax in 2017. What we're seeing this quarter is the first time that we've seen a decline in auto-use tax since 2010, so, eight years, we've had a pretty good run. So, we still think, in terms of 2018, we will meet our budget. We had scheduled in a little bit of a dip in auto-use tax, so for 2018, we'll be fine against our budget. But again, this is something that we just want to keep our eye on. Auto-use tax is a rather large revenue source for the general fund, so as we go into our next budget year and prepare our tenure model, this is something that we'll keep our eye Sales tax, this is the largest revenue source in the general fund, and right now, we're at a 5.3% growth. Our budget is about 4%, so we're still trending upward, which is a good sign. If you remember from 2017, though, when you look at the indicators in terms of sales tax by industry code, all of those codes in 2017 were green. And now, we're seeing a little bit of sprinkling of red, so the telephone equipment and the office supplies. And then, we have yellow monitor indicators on fast-food restaurants, public utilities, and retail hardware. And the reason for that is, for example, fast-food restaurants, last year, we saw an increase of over 5%. Right now, it's trending at 2%. The public utilities, in 2017, we were at 8%. Right now, it's at a little over 1%. And then, retail hardware was at 10% last year. Right now, it's at about 1.8%. So, when you take all these together, this might be just an indication of just a little bit of softening of the economy, so something that, again, that we want to keep our eye And then, building revenue. This one, we have a 31.4% reduction. You know, we've had just tremendous growth over the past several years, so we are seeing a little bit of slowing of our building revenues. And you may think, 31% reduction, that's not going to be good. If you do remember, we budget our building revenues conservatively, meaning that we budget for an average year in terms of building permits. So, right now, in 2018, we will most definitely meet our budget. But again, this is just another indication of a little bit of slowing, so it's something that we want to, again, keep our eye on in the future.
We have a overview of all of our other funds. For the most part, they are doing very well. We've got a few monitors up there, and one warning. So, the tax increment funds, we have a monitor on the expenditures. That's primarily because of new positions being moved out to the Delta Station, and the increase in the retirement fund contribution by the city. Most of those have been offset, though, by the vacancy savings in the police department. On community development, we also have a monitor on expenditures, and that's due to some large transfers to the Capital Improvement Fund for the car street sidewalk improvements. We do, this fund will meet its fund balance at the end of the year, and it will not exceed its expenditures. The housing fund, we have a monitor on revenues there. This is due to grant funding from the Federals, from the federal government, for the Section Eight program, and we expected a reduction there, so we will continue to monitor this throughout the year and adjust as we need to. The water fund, there is a monitor on revenues there. That is due to a decrease in the tap fees. Again, we're seeing the building coming down a little bit, so the tap fees have come down as well. We do expect them to meet all of their budgets for the year, though. The golf fund, we have a monitor on revenues there. That is due to, um, Westwood's just reopened in March. Lake Arbor is currently closed for remodeling and expected to open later in the fall this year. We also have a warning, that is where our one warning is for the end-of-the-year balance. We do know that the golf fund will use some of its fund balance this year. We do expect them to stay within their budget, but we are monitoring that very closely with the golf folks on a monthly basis. And the risk management fund or the insurance fund, we also have a monitor on expenditures there. We're starting to see some of those repairs to buildings from the hailstorm last year, so we will continue to monitor that as well through the year.
So, investments in a rising interest rate market have...
Ms. Ford, did you have a question that, before we go to that? I apologize, I didn't see your light.
That's okay, Mayor. I did have one question regarding the building revenue. I was curious, when I saw that figure, if that was something that we were seeing within other cities as well. I know that might be hard to...
Yeah, it's kind of hard to answer, because the building revenue has kind of been unique to Arvada and some of the other ring cities around Denver, but certainly, we are seeing slowing when we talk to our different sister cities.
Okay, thank you.
So, a quick update on the investments. We are in a rising interest rate environment, so you can see, compared to a year ago, our yield has grown from what was 1.2% a year ago to 1.58% so far for six months, overall net increase of about $548,000, which is wonderful. If you remember, four and five years ago, we were talking about tens of thousands of dollars, and now, we're talking about larger numbers, so that is exciting. You will notice in the bottom-right that we are on the shorter end of the curve. We have additional money in money markets and savings, additional money in agencies and treasuries, as we are trying to maximize our buying opportunities as interest rates go up. We try to take advantage of that. And so, you will see this for the next few months, and possibly even throughout next year, and then, the hope is that we can garner additional return by going out further on the curve at that point. If you do remember, a year and a half ago, we hired an outside investment firm to help do a portion of our investments, and I am proud to report that our internal person is beating the outside investment firm, so I'm not sure if that's a good thing or a bad thing. We meet with them on a quarterly basis and jab them a little bit. If you took all of your mark-to-market on your investments, we are exactly even. So, the outside firm and our inside investment person are doing the same. So, we would like to say that Vesta's doing a wonderful job, and we will continue to push on our outside firm to get a better return. So, very quick update of our second quarter. As we talked a little bit, building activity is slowing down. We are expecting it to continue to slow down for the next couple of years, but we do feel comfortable that we will at least meet or exceed budget. Slowing down, meaning we're not going at a breakneck pace, just a really, really fast pace. We have some large capital projects on the horizon, and a possible debt reauthorization coming to you here later this month. And we are finishing up our 2019-2020 budget process, and will be in front of council during the months of September and October. Any questions that we can answer?
Council questions. Mr. McGough?
Yes, I have a question. Took note that the return on investments has increased. Just wondering, are you noticing general inflation, general increase in costs of general items throughout the city?
Absolutely. What we're seeing is, on your day-to-day items, not a lot, but anything construction-related or capital-related, growing exponentially. So, street repair, going through the roof. When we're out competing in the market on, for example, the Delta Station, we're having a difficult time competing. But pens, pencils, paper, that stuff seems to be going at a pretty, pretty normal increase.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I've heard some discussion from other mayors, and we were pleased with the Supreme Court decision, U.S. Supreme Court decision, on the issue of internet sales tax, but I'm starting to hear a cautious call as it pertains to Colorado. Can you speak to that a little bit?
Boy, what the, that's a million-dollar question. I actually had a phone call today at 4:00 with a national reporter asking me that same very question. We're all quite excited with what's going on, and also quite nervous, because the challenge with the state of Colorado and home rule compared to what went through on the Wayfair side makes the opportunity and ability for us to collect internet tax quite difficult. We're working with the legal department and outside council to trying to understand what the next steps are, realizing that the state of Colorado is not part of the Streamline Coalition, or not part of the Simplification Coalition, items that were named specifically in the court case. And so, I'd love to sit here and tell you, we're going to receive $1 million starting next year. I don't think we could put a number or a time on that. Certainly internally, we've done our own guess at what we're missing, and that number ranges anywhere from half a million dollars to $2 million, depending on at what level you could collect. And so, what we're really hoping for in the interim is that some larger entities will choose to self-select and actually collect and remit on their own, and then, we will get some sort of direction, either through legislative action at the state level, or through, something through Congress, honestly. Our difficulty is, we could certainly have the ability today to send demand letters out, and we know immediately, we would end up in court over something like that. And so, it's in our planning process, and we're quite excited, and we do think something will happen, but how we get there, you know as much as the rest of us know.
Okay. Well, Mr. Archer, I understand you're very involved in the committee on that, so I thank you for carrying our interests forward, so we'll stay tuned.
Thank you.
Very good. Okay, I see no other questions. Thank you for the information, the update. Looks like we're in very good shape.
Thank you.
With that, now, I will open the public hearing on the Indiana Plaza at Candela's Commercial filing number three, Preliminary Development Plan generally located at the northwest corner of Indiana Street and West 91st Place. Mr. Devon?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Planning Manager Rob Smentana will go ahead and introduce this item.
Good morning, members of the council. The applicant, Drake Real Estate, is requesting preliminary development plan approval for a single-story, approximately 4,100-square-foot building, as you mentioned, at the northwest corner of Indiana and 91st Place. The applicant is requesting one modification from the Land Development Code as part of the, as part of this project, and that is to allow the building to be located 84 feet from the center line of Indiana, instead of the required 100 feet. Staff is recommending approval of the preliminary development plan with proposed modification based upon the approval criteria found in the Land Development Code. The Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the preliminary development plan at their July 17 meeting. We have received the signed posting log and affidavit, and they are in order, and the applicant is in attendance for presentation and questions. We also have Jeremiah Bebo here with our staff for any questions as well.
Very good. Any person who's going to be testifying on this matter, if you'll raise your right hand, do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give in these proceedings will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Very good. I'll make the posting log and the mailing affidavit part of the record. The applicant may make their presentation.
I am Mike Minor with Drake Real Estate. The applicant. It will be a pretty short presentation. It's, as the Planning Commission stated, it's a 4,000-square-foot building. The intended tenant is a dentist. On two sides, it's locked in by 91st and Indiana, and on the other two sides, the building is locked in by a large retaining wall that is about a 30-foot drop-off. You can see the site plan here. It's in the Candela's area that's being developed. The King Supers is to the south. And here, you can see on the north side, that is where the large retaining wall is, so there's basically no neighbors to speak of. And just some renderings of the intended building. And that's it for our presentation.
Okay. Is there any member of the public that would like to address City Council on this issue? Seeing none, the public comment portion is closed. I'll open it up for City Council. I'll open it up for City Council question or action. Mr. Jones?
Just one question, and then I'll make a motion if there's no other questions. I recognize that you're right there, kind of by yourself, but on the backside of your building, the side that's facing Indiana, what kind of lighting are you going to have on that side of the building that might be facing the neighborhoods across the street?
There will be some light poles, but it'll all be directed back towards our site. It won't be spilling out towards the neighborhood.
Well, and are those light poles going to be on the parking lot? Or do you have any lighting on the backside of your building, like a sign or...
No. No, there would not be an illuminated sign on the backside. Our only signage would be on the street sides. There might be at the main entrance, but it wouldn't be illuminated to the point where it would be a problem for the community behind us.
And I guess if there were, you would comply with the sign ordinances and the night light, the night sky ordinance?
Yeah. And that would be done through the signage permitting process.
Yeah, okay. That's my question I have.
Yeah, I've got one question, and then you can proceed with your motion. I guess my question is, why the 84 feet instead of the 100 feet? What's the justification or the need for that exception from the design code?
It's because of the nature of the site. We just couldn't really fit a viable building on this site because of the retaining wall there on the north side. We just couldn't fit enough of a building with the 100-foot setback.
Mr. Jones?
Thank you. I move that Indiana Plaza at Candela's commercial filing three preliminary development plan generally located at the northwest corner of Indiana Street and 91st Place be approved subject to the attached updated conditions of approval. This motion is based on the findings of fact adopted by the Planning Commission.
Motion for approval of the preliminary development plan. All votes are cast. That passes seven to zero. Congratulations. Go forward, do good work.
Thank you.
Very good. Next, I'll open the public hearing on Council 18033, an ordinance approving a conditional use permit to allow for a light industrial use coffee roasting for Two Rivers Coffee, 8250 West 80th Avenue, Suite 15. Let me ask a question of Mr. Daley. Is this quasi-judicial? Okay, very good. Mr. Devon?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, we'll have, again, Rob Smetana, Planning Manager, introduce this item.
Thank you again, Mayor, members of council. The applicant, Eric Yocum, is requesting a conditional use permit to operate a light industrial use within a B2 zone district. The space would be used to roast coffee for the applicant's retail business, which is also located in Arvada. Staff is recommending approval of the conditional use permit based upon the approval criteria found in the Land Development Code. The Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the conditional use permit at their July 17 meeting. We have received the signed posting log and affidavit, and they are in order, and the applicant is in attendance for presentation and to answer any questions. And again, Jeremiah Bebo is also here if you have any questions for staff.
Very good. The items will be made part of the record in terms of the posting log and the mailing affidavit. Any member of the public wishes to testify on this matter, if you'll raise your right hand. Swear affirm the testimony you're about to give in these proceedings will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. Very good. Come down and state your name and address for the record, and then make your presentation.
My name is Eric Yocum. My address is 6282 Yank Court, Arvada, Colorado 80004. If you'll allow me to, I will breeze through a bit of this presentation as I overprepared it for the first presentation. And nobody wants to hear me talk for an hour, although I could.
Not if you want approval.
Yeah. But I will very much welcome questions and comments. We are seeking a -- we've been a craft, especially a coffee shop, for well over eight years now, and have been growing exponentially and need space to grow into. So we are proposing that we move our roasting operations, which have been a part of our café up until now, into a new space. This space here on 80th and Carr is the Meadows Shopping Center. We are proposing that we use an existing commercial space that's been out of use for some time now, as our primary roasting space, as well as some office space. So therefore, we are seeking a conditional use permit for that. This will allow us to grow into various dreams of ours as we kind of look towards the future for additional locations and additional production and such. This will also allow us to really increase our sustainability and reduce our energy usage for per pound of green coffee roasted. So we will reduce our energy uses by nearly 80% of energy per pound roasted. So that is the gist, and I just turned it off instead of... So I will now welcome questions.
Okay, is there any member of the public that would like to address City Council on this issue tonight? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment portion and open up for City Council questions or action. Nancy Ford, you're first.
I'd like to make a motion if there...
Okay, you'll reserve the right to make the motion. Did you have any questions? I do have a couple other lights.
No, I have no questions.
Okay, Mr. McGough, you were next.
Yes, I just have a question looking at the Planning Commission minutes. It was asked in there if there were any odor issues with the roasting of coffee there, and the answer was no. How do you roast coffee without there being odors?
Right. There's no, what we would consider unpleasant odors. The odor that comes from the coffee, the admissions that come from the coffee is steam. The odor that comes from the coffee is that of baked bread and sort of popcorn. We, right now, we share a building with a bakery and a grocery store, natural grocers, so it's a very busy area, and we've never received a complaint about the odor. More so, it's sort of a draw towards the odor, so it's been, hasn't been an issue for us.
That's what I was thinking, it would be a pleasant odor.
Yeah.
Certainly not an unpleasant one.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Pfeifer?
Well, that's where I was going to go, because I recall us having a conversation of somebody roasting over here in Old Town, and there's no issue with the odor or anything, right? Okay, getting a lot of shaking heads, no. Yeah, because I enjoy coffee, so I don't have an issue with it, but some people may have some. But I didn't know you were roasting over at your other location, so I would not have known that.
Yeah, we have been for just over three and a half years. It's been a part of our operation at the moment, a small part.
Yeah, okay, well, thank you.
Sure.
Ms. Ford, you may make your motion.
I move that CB 18-033, an ordinance approving a conditional use permit to allow for a light industrial use coffee roasting for Two Rivers Coffee, 8250 West 80th Avenue, Suite 15, be approved subject to the attached updated condition of approval on final reading, numbered 4651, and ordered published by title only.
Motion for approval of the conditional use permit. All votes are cast. That passes seven to zero. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Go forward and roast some coffee.
I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Next, we have public comment again. Is there any member of the public that would like to address City Council at this portion of the meeting? Seeing none, we'll close that portion. Reports from City Council. Ms. Miller, do you have a motion?
I certainly do, thank you. I move to appoint Richard Derryberry to the Board of Adjustments for an unexpired term ending April 30, 2021.
We conducted interviews of two excellent candidates for Board of Adjustment. We selected the one who had been, frankly, in the community a little bit longer and also had been through our Arvada 101 class, and we think that's a great, great way to sort of learn about things. Both candidates were excellent with that. That passes seven to zero. Any other council reports? We have Mr. Pfeifer first.
Yeah, actually, just more of a question for the council. Right now, there's been some discussion at the Jefferson, Jeffco Transportation Action Advisory Committee, JeffTag, about maybe consolidating or closing that committee down and consolidating into the Jefferson County Subregion Committee, which is the subregion of Dr. Cog, to see that that might be more impactful, because it is all electeds in there, and the attendance of electeds at JeffTag has dropped dramatically. In fact, I think I was the only one there last time, but...
Then you can control if you're the only one there.
Well, when Libby walks in, it's a whole different story. So I hee, yeah, bow down to Libby walking in.
Mr. Pfeifer, when I was on JeffTag, they all showed up.
Oh.
Ooh!
I think they were trying to control you more than anything. Maybe they trusted me, and that's why I...
Ah.
Go for it. But I do want to let council know that that discussion's happening. I'm for it. I mean, as you all know, we're on like 40, it feels like, different committees, and I don't believe in having committees just to meet and take time. We want to be impactful, and I think maybe the time has exhausted for JeffTag, and the new subregional committee is the right committee for that action. So if you guys have any concerns with me saying something or doing something, just tell me, but I want to make sure you knew that that was a discussion happening there.
Well, it sounds like there's some duplication of effort.
There is right now, and everyone's showing up to the subregion one, obviously, because that's where the money is. And so JeffTag has no money, so of course, everyone will show up to that one.
We should follow the money. Okay. I don't see anyone, anybody have any heartburn about that. Yes, Ms. Ford?
I just wanted to mention that I'll be having a meet and greet next Wednesday on the 15th. It'll occur at Trinity Presbyterian Church on Vance and Wadsworth between 6:30 and 8:30, or earlier, if there's not a lot of discussion.
Great, I think it's great, the council members who like to have these. We're always exploring ways to be able to interact with our citizenry more, and I applaud you and Ms. Miller, and I know that all council members have done these, and I think it's terrific that you do those from time to time just to get additional feedback. We're also reaching out in other ways to our citizenry through our Speak Up Arvada program, and we're thrilled with that. And so any opportunity we can have to have better discussions. Right now, we're all getting a fairly frequent interaction with our citizenry about the train horns. Just know, please, that we don't like them either. They're sort of a necessary evil as part of the process to get approvals for the operation of the Gold Line, and we will be doggone diligent, and I know our staff will be doggone diligent of applying for quiet zones just as quickly as we can possibly be permitted. If there's any delays, it will not be because of the city of Arvada. It will... We recognize the need to let people be able to sleep at night, and we're frustrated as our citizens are, but we're trying to move it in the right direction. It's, like I said, it's a necessary evil right now to have the train horns. Safety comes first. We recognize that. Mr. Devon and I will be meeting with a representative on this issue here very shortly that will help get us more answers on how we best proceed. So we are moving forward with that. So, Mr. Devon, anything? Town hall? Oh, yes, I should speak to that. We have a, we are doing a telephone town hall this Wednesday evening. I've recorded some messages, so your answering machines and your phones will be ringing with the not-ready-for-television voice of Mayor Williams. Encourage you to participate in the town hall meeting this Wednesday that will be from 6:30 to 7:30. It's going to be a great opportunity for you to call in, and we'll be talking about the opportunity for the bond issue that we will be voting on on August 27 to determine whether or not to seek authorization for bond funds of a little over $80 million without increasing taxes for two very important projects here in Arvada. Both the Ralston Road project and 72nd Avenue, including the grade separation, which are projects that our Citizen Improvement Committee, for our Capital Improvement Committee, from our citizens' perspective, were the top two priorities for us to work on with this. So we'll have that town hall, telephone town hall meeting this Wednesday from 6:30 to 7:30. Listen to that recording from the mayor in terms of how to be part of that, or you can go to arvada.org and get information as well. Okay, Mr. Devon?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Next Monday, we'll have a workshop, present the Hometown Colorado Initiative projects as well as the Land Development Code update, explanation discussion of draft code module number two. Excellent engagement, great representation on the city, by the City Council, by council members Bob Pfeifer and Nancy Ford, who are part of those discussions. So we will be happy to present the council with an update next Monday night on that. And then, lastly, I am requesting, staff is requesting the City Council to entertain a motion to cancel the October 1, 2018, meeting. There is a regional athletic event occurring on that Monday evening, and we are requesting the City Council to consider a motion to cancel that meeting.
Mr. Marriott?
Thank you, Your Honor. I move that we cancel the Monday, October 1, City Council meeting.
You can vote however you want. We can have the Don Howard vote.
That's what I was going to do.
Right, 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 right. That passes six to one, Mr. Jones voting no.
There could have been too many of us. It's the chair.
You can feel it. Mr. Devon, anything else? Mr. Daley, do you want to give a brief discussion of your 25 previous amendments to your contract? Okay, nothing else? We stand adjourned. Thank you.